Let it go. We're open? Okay, first of all, we acknowledge, appreciate that the land in which we gather is the traditional on-seated territory of the Mi'kmaq First Nation, and we have occupied this territory since time immemorable. Called to order, just wanted to wish our executive assistant, Jackie McKinnon, a big happy birthday. I think she's thirty, I think, thirty-two, I think, something like that. So Jackie, if you're watching, happy birthday. Bon fete. And would I say Feliz Navidad? No, that's Christmas. Anyways, happy birthday. Okay, declarations of conflict of interest, any? Okay, approval of agenda. Okay, I have Counselor McCabe, Counselor McKinnon.
Thank you, your worship. Counselor Twill. I'm asking that we take, under our closed session, the fire underwriter study, if it could be removed for tonight. Our chief is sick, and he hopes to have that rescheduled in the very near future.
Okay, Counselor McKinnon.
Thank you, your worship. On your new business, I'd like to introduce and notice a motion on your public works issue.
Sure. Thank you. No new business? He has to wait until a regular monthly meeting?
I'll withdraw that then, thank you.
Okay, we'll leave it then. Counselor. Can you send a... Counselor Twill.
Yep, just looking at the closed-door session and the open-door session, there's a lot of pretty important items on the agendas for both forums. Is there a reason why the agendas for both the closed and open are stacked? Like, we've kind of discussed this before, that why wouldn't we just take three or four items, discuss them, and then deal with it that evening? But what I'm finding, and maybe this is just me, is that you've got a lot of major issues here on both the open and closed-door session, and I want to have a thorough discussion on each one of them, and I don't want to be told, well, you know, we have to move along here, we got to get this done, without making an informed decision and having an informed discussion. So I brought this up before, but somehow we seem to come back to stacking the agenda, and I don't think it's a good decision-making process. I really don't.
Thank you, I'll take that under advisement.
Well, no, it's not a question of taking it under advisement.
Yeah.
I'm bringing it up here because I'd like to see if the rest of the council feels the same way, and if they don't, that's fine. But, you know, I'm not going to be rushed into decisions that have to be made where we don't have a real thorough discussion backed up with the pertinent, relevant information that is provided by the staff to us, so we can have those relevant discussions.
Okay. Okay, guys, there's a long agenda, I want to just get moving. We got 4A, I need someone to move it. Move the agenda. Moved, seconded. Counselor McLeer, moved by Counselor McKinnon, Counselor McLeer. Okay, does he want to discuss what he's asking? Okay, let's go. Counselor McCabe.
I tend to agree that, I think, again, that was the discussion I was hoping we could have, where it was more efficiency. I think people thought I was hoping to scrap committees, that wasn't it. I just think that there's ways to be more effective, and there are very important items. And when you're here for long hours, after about a two-hour mark, for me, after working all day, I find it really hard to be engaged and to be really here, and there are really important items, whether we can look at that and break it up over a month, if we, you know, if it's really important and we have to have an extra meeting, I guess we have to have an extra meeting, but I tend to agree with Counselor Twill that we have to find a way to be more effective.
Okay. Question? Question called? All in favor? Counselor Dron, yea or nay?
In favor.
Okay. That was against? Okay, Counselor Twill? Okay. Okay, let's go to 4A. Do you want to read the resolutions? CAO, Fraser.
Your worship, Public Works Committee first resolution is moved by Counselor Mitchell Twill, seconded by Counselor John McLeer. Be it resolved that as per the conditions of the public request for quotes for vehicle rentals, the submission from Enterprise Rent-A-Car Canada Company be accepted, and that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Question?
There you are. Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Matar.
I have a question disregarding the, these leased vehicles, the daily rates or the monthly rates, and maybe this is just a longstanding operational item, but when you look at what we pay, for instance, like a half-ton truck at $1,500 a month, I assume that's for $4,000, or 4,000 kilometers per month, an additional 20 cents for each additional kilometer, would it be not more cost-effective to be buying these vehicles and putting them in our capital budget over, because this can be renewed on a five-year, up to five additional calendar years? So over five years, I would think that we could have bought a truck, bought these vehicles, and paid far less than we're paying for leasing, but maybe there's a, maybe there's a model behind why they're done this way? It just seemed quite high, and it's the first time, I think, I've seen this particular resolution come in and got to really see what we pay for the leased vehicles.
Counselor Twill? Do you want it deferred?
No, I think Counselor Matar asked a very good question. I did ask, from a general perspective, are we renting enough vehicles to be able to provide the services that we're providing? I think our manager said yes. Buying versus lease, or buying, renting versus buying out, I think I will turn it over to our manager to give us more specific information and the rationale behind the renting of the vehicles. I will say this, that time is of the essence, and that these different departments need these vehicles in order to get on the job and provide our different work crews, the transportation and the ability to be able to go to the job site with the appropriate resources.
Albert.
Thank you, your worship. Counselor Twill, thanks. Yeah, so basically, we have considered, you know, buying vehicles in the past and keeping them in our fleet. These vehicles are only going to be used for about six months, so we've kind of taken the numbers and considered that instead of buying the vehicles and having them sit through the winter, and then having to perform maintenance on them, since we do have an influx of staff coming in through the summer months to do seasonal work, that it is kind of better for us to rent these vehicles, because we don't have to, you know, do oil changes, do anything like that, maintenance-wise on them. That being said, we're hoping that three of these vehicles can go back a little bit earlier. Right now, we're looking to rent ten, we're hoping three of them can go back earlier if one of our other tenders to purchase trucks comes in, and those three from the ones we purchased will be full-time, that can go into the fleet.
Follow-up?
Thank you, Albert. I appreciate the context, there was just more of me trying to understand the context around it, and it makes, it makes perfect sense, so, again, not trying to hinder the ability to move forward on these purchases, it's more just having a good understanding of the rationale for leasing versus buying, and I assume that there's obviously appropriate times to buy versus appropriate times to lease, so I appreciate the context and ready to move on the agenda.
Counselor McKinnon.
Thank you, your worship. Yeah, I kind of had the same question with Counselor Matar, but I had Counselor Matar, sorry. Question, I get the trucks, I'm just wondering why seven-passed vans, SUVs, mini-cars, compact cars, like, what purpose do they serve in public works?
Counselor Twill? Just deferred? Okay. Albert.
Thank you, your worship, through to Counselor. So we just went out for these, right now, the, we just went out instead to just get quotes in case we need some of these other vehicles. For public works, we are mostly always just looking to get half-ton trucks, and that's what we're looking to pass. We just ask for these in case they may be one-off scenarios where we may need to rent, you know, a van or something else for some certain scenarios that come up, you know, if we have to move staff for an event, or sometimes we have flaggers where we don't need trucks, we need a larger vehicle that can just be used. We do have some SUVs in our fleet as well, that we use for those kinds of jobs, so that's why they're there. It is, I would say, 99% half-ton trucks.
Good sir.
Thanks, I'm sure we've seen a resolution like this before, I don't remember ever seeing one like this. I'm just wondering, I say, the money's been allocated in our operational budget, but do we know what the total amount is usually? We have that in our resolution, the actual amount of money for easy reference, but there's no dollar amount in the resolution. Counselor Twill?
Counselor Twill?
Why is there not a dollar amount or an estimate attached to the resolution? That's a very good question. Mr. Albert.
Just for an Albert.
Thank you, your worship, through to the Counselor. So we do have, it's not in the document, I apologize, but, yeah, our operating budget does have a line item of $90,000 for this year, for these vehicle rentals. Again, this is a month-by-month basis that we rent these, and even if we were to send them back early, it is, we can divide the rate daily for an average of 30 days per month. So, yeah, we're keeping track of these every month and making sure that we don't go over that budget, or if we do, that we come back and see.
So, if I can try to capture, so it's approving it on a month-to-month basis, but it's safe to say we're renting them for a period of six months, so, but you assess and evaluate it after each month, right? And then come to that six-month period, if you're looking for an extension, then it would come back to council in the form of a resolution, is that safe to say?
Is that any help, Counselor, or Deputy Mayor, Lana?
I think so. So if you cap out over 90,000, then you can't spend any more than the 90, is that the idea? So if you go higher than 90, you're coming back here. Gotcha. Perfect. Thank you.
Question's called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. I can't see your hand there, Counselor Dron, yea or nay?
In favor.
Okay, seven-zero. Next one there, Sue.
Public Works Resolution Number Two, your worship, moved by Counselor Mitchell Twill, seconded by Counselor John McLeer, that as per the conditions of the public request for quotes for 2024 or 2025 half-ton crew cab four-by-four work trucks, the submission from Summerside Chrysler Dodge for 13 vehicles in the amount of $62,350 each, plus all applicable taxes, for a total of $810,550 plus all applicable taxes, be accepted, and that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Counselor Twill? Counselor Matar? Counselor Twill first.
Yeah, look, from what I understand, I wasn't part of these discussions at the committee level, but our senior management went back to make sure that, from a legal perspective, that due process has been followed, all the bases are covered, and the result is, this is the resolution that previous committee is bringing forward. Again, just to reiterate, this has been vetted through our senior management and our legal counsel, and they're quite confident bringing the resolution forward. I will say, I'm disappointed, not in the process, I'm disappointed that we have a lot of local businesses here, in the Cheryltown, greater Cheryltown area. I was hoping that, you know, they would have been considered contenders, but anyway, from what I understand, they didn't qualify, and that's disappointing, because I can tell you that the last go-around, working with the Automobile Association of Prince Edward Island, a lot of our local car dealerships were wanting to have that ability to be able to submit tenders, and that didn't happen on this occasion, this is a substantial purchase, and I will be supporting the resolution, but I do have mixed emotions on it. I'm strong proponents of supporting our own local businesses, but from what I understand, this tender was awarded fair and square, so I'll be not only moving the resolution, but supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Matar. Thank you, your worship, to the chair. So when this resolution came to council a couple weeks ago, I was certainly vocal in my, kind of in how I interpreted what was being done and the process that was being followed. At the time, I did not support the resolution, and then it came to the decision of us getting a legal opinion. I've taken a lot of time to consider my decision, and I have to rely on the fact that due process was followed, although, albeit, it might not be the best process, but a process nonetheless was followed. And I, you know, I think it would be, I struggled between what was right and what was wrong here, and I hope that going forward, if we find ourselves in these situations through our procurement, that, you know, we do have a very small vendor community locally that we work with, and if we find ourselves in these situations, I hope that we can, you know, take the time to reach out and ensure that people all have that competitive advantage, you know, because once that tender went out and someone applied, they probably never thought to look back at it. And this isn't, you know, one vehicle, the difference, this was a significant amount between them. But my conscience, you know, back and forth on this, I believe that the process was followed, there is a documented process, it's on the website, it is what it is, and I'm going to have to, you know, stick with that process. But again, I think this just strengthens how our procurement bylaw needs to be, you know, established and, you know, and get in place as quickly as possible, so that we can avoid this and have better outcomes for our business community and for council as a whole, because we did spend a lot of time debating on this, and we had some legal opinions, but nonetheless, I guess the process was followed. So I'll support the resolution here this evening, I don't think we need to hold the vehicles up at this point in time, so prepared to move forward.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, your worship, and through to the chair. I didn't see the legal opinion in the report, is it available for council? I mean, I'll definitely support the resolution, I'll take it at face value, that, you know, that we've got everything confirmed, but is there a legal opinion?
Just one second, Counselor Twill, hold on. Go ahead.
I did have a brief discussion with our chief administrative officer, and, you know, I take her at her word, you know, due diligence was followed, which included council from a legal perspective, was to go over the process to ensure that there was no discrepancies, no disparities, and that, you know, we're in solid legal footing. I will reiterate, though, you know, there's got to be a better way for, or we have to encourage local businesses, I mean, you know, we're saying promote shop local now, well, you know, I've been on that vein for the last number of years, and I fought hard against having one company controlling the fact that, you know, we'd be purchasing all our vehicles or renting vehicles from just one service provider, to open that up so there's an equal level playing field. So maybe we need to have some discussions with the Automobile Association to find out where the gaps are, and why some of these bids are being vetted in the most effective way.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor.
If that makes any sense. Great.
Thank you. So Counselor Twill, is this for 12 months, 24 months? What's the deal for? I've been asking in finance, too, Counselor McLeer, should it not be for one year?
To purchase vehicles for one year?
Well, okay, so let's say if we need more, they can get them at 62,350. I thought, if you look at other tenders, and I spoke to the director of Community Services about it, that it should be specified for 12 months, six months?
Well, I think there's a timeframe, there's a timeframe in terms of...
There is a timeline on it?
There's a timeline in terms of purchasing or leasing these vehicles, but we're purchasing these vehicles, and I think there's longevity when it comes to purchasing these vehicles, but to provide more background information, I will ask our manager or the director...
Yeah, okay.
Responsible to...
Just for the public record.
Please be more specific.
Thank you.
Thank you, your worship. This resolution is for the purchase of 13 vehicles, but in the tender that was issued, there was an option, should both the vendor and the city agree, additional vehicles could be purchased at that price, but this resolution is for 13 for public works.
Did you hear that, Counselor Twill? So is it for, that's what I'm asking, is it for six months, 12 months, like, what's the timeline?
What's the duration?
Well, these are a certain vehicle year, so it would be for that year, or as long as those vehicles are available.
What year? 24, 25, 25, 26?
Yeah, 24 or 25.
Okay, for how long, Richard?
As long as they would be available and the vendor would be willing to sell at that price.
So that could be six months, 12 months, 18 months? Because there are dealerships that hold on to have vehicles, 24, 25, 26, correct?
Correct.
What's the norm in how long the city or a particular department would keep the vehicles for?
We will keep the vehicles for six to seven years.
That's right, that's what I'm looking for. So that is the trend, provide, we provide the, you know, the maintenance and looking after these vehicles and making sure they get the proper attention that they need in terms of keeping them on the road, making them safe for our employees, and all of those prerequisites. So we're averaging, or the city's averaging, whether it be, say, public works, could be water and sewer, could be parks and recreation, police vehicles, I'm not sure, it's averaging around six to seven years, correct?
That's... If you look across and you include police vehicles, their timeframe is, I believe, is quite a bit shorter.
Okay.
But across the city, we need to do a good review of it. For our public works trucks, probably the six to seven year. We'd have to do a review of the fleet.
Yeah.
Just, I'm sorry, Counselor...
Right ahead.
Yeah, just on the maintenance, we have our own mechanics, and how much is farmed out besides our own mechanics? How much is farmed out to the private sector?
Counselor Twill, that's, we're dealing with purchase of 13 vehicles, not the maintenance. All I asked was a question, is it for 12 months, 18 months? We're just going to leave it open, 24, 25? That's what he's saying. Counselor Matar? Oh, sorry, Counselor Dron?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Brown. And I can understand, like, this resolution that's before us, it just says for 13 vehicles. Now, when you say, is it going to be open for a year, I don't see any of that. Is it going to be open for 12 months, or we can go back next year, or, that's not in here. And furthermore, you know, here, last month or last meeting, we had 16 trucks in the same resolution, now we come back, now we're only going 13 trucks in this resolution, and then we're going to go three in water and sewer, when that's what happened the first time. We went three first, and then the 13 come in, and these other two companies were disqualified. So, I mean, all of a sudden, we come back, it's okay, legal opinion says, you know, we did nothing wrong, everything's on the up and up, now we're splitting them again. We're not going the same resolution of 16 trucks. So, I mean, there's a lot of issues here, and procurement's a big part of it, which we all know, but everything changes every time we come to council to vote on something. So if this would have went out properly two weeks ago, there wouldn't have been a problem, but the rule seems to have changed, and I can't support this one or the other one, because it seems to me that it's not done properly. So I can't support it, but I just wanted to stress that, and when you ask for 12 months or 18 months, can we buy these trucks? That doesn't say that here. We're not given permission for that. I mean, I don't know how things go where we give permission to do this, and then it keeps steamrolling down the line.
No, my clarification, Counselor Dron, was, is this for 12 months? Is this for 18 months? Because tenders with the province... Because tenders with the province, they have a timeline on it. That's all I'm making reference to.
No, no, and I certainly understand that and support that. You know, and we keep coming back and saying this, but then when we put a tender out, it's not included in that. So that's the issue I have. I mean, that'd be great if we could get these trucks, if something breaks down, we can go back to the tender and get the truck for that price. That would be terrific, but that's not here.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Matarde.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. I just wanted to clarify if, what I understand your question to be is, how long is this tender open for to allow us to continue to procure vehicles beyond the 13 that we have for 24, 25 models?
Correct.
So if next week we determine we want four more, do we just go back to Summerside Chrysler Dodge and say, we want four more? Or are we reissuing another tender that would allow us to have another competitive process where everybody could fairly bid on the vehicles? I think that's how I interpreted your question when you're saying...
No, my point is, is that...
Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, my point is, there's always a timeline.
Sure, yeah.
Because...
So, well, it could be the fact that when the tender closed, the tender closed, and we're going to get the 13 that we're getting or asking for, 13, 16, whatever.
Right.
However, you're now opening up another set of questions, which is, is this an open-ended tender for a period of time that allows us to keep drawing from vehicles from Summerside Chrysler at the tune of 62, 5?
Yeah.
Is the question?
Yes. So the province, when they do an off, when they do a tender, they do a standing offer for one year, and they give one price. They get one price. So if they have to take in one vehicle, five vehicles, 10 vehicles, in that 12 months, that's what they get. Counsel McCabe.
Thank you, your worship. I guess I need to know that I'm supporting a one-time purchase as well, but is this a one-time purchase with a new tender to go out? That was exactly my question. If so, I think that needs to be clearly implicated in the tender. I won't be supporting, I think we do have to go out to tender to keep it fair and open and transparent.
Counsel Twill.
Well, I guess my question is, I wasn't at the last Public Works meeting, I was still the chair of Parks and Rec. So, Mr. Mayor, since you attended the meeting, can you tell me what was decided? You should be able to give the memory of what took place at the meeting, I mean, these questions would have been asked. So what do you recollect?
Counsel Twill, what do I recollect? Is the questions I'm asking now, I asked then, Counsel Duran was at that meeting. We were talking, and Counsel, I believe Counsel McLeer was at that meeting. So these questions are not new. I want a timeline. That's, the timeline's not here.
Well, did you get a timeline, sir?
Look at the resolution, Counsel Twill. Does it have the timeline? Does it?
You tell me.
Well, read it.
I haven't got it in front of me.
There's no timeline.
There's no timeline.
12 months.
So, did the committee recommend this to council?
This came forward as is, and I asked to put 12 months on it.
Right, and did that happen?
It's not there.
Not there. So did the committee recommend the resolution as is? Somebody tell me. Because if you didn't, why's the resolution here?
If it's not there, I'm asking to add a friendly amendment to it.
Can you do that from the chair?
No, I'm asking this for someone to do it, Counsel Twill.
So, no, no, you got to help me, Mr. Mayor. This was not vetted, or was vetted through the Public Works Committee, the previous Public Works Committee, yet it's on the floor here for council to debate and vote on, and there are still more questions. So if that's the case, why's the resolution here? Can you tell me?
Get a friendly amendment to put 12 months on it. Okay.
I'm asking a question once a year.
Deputy Mayor Yankoff.
Thanks. So this is, my original question reminded me of what Counsel Duran asked. I want, I do want to know, why is this resolution split into two this time? The first time it was here, it was 16 on one resolution, now it's two, three, and 13. Counsel Duran, I think, alluded to that. I would like the answer to that question. And the other thing, when Counsel Twill just asked about if committee recommended, accepted staff's recommendation, the committee recommendation is pretty wishy-washy, it's hard to tell from reading the committee recommendation. This committee recommendation will be forwarded to Finance Committee for their approval. Finance Committee approved it on April the 2nd to forward the resolution onto council. So I, it's not really clear whether or not the actual committee itself, because there's no indication there that you asked for that part in there. So those are my two questions for Counsel Twill. One, how come the resolutions, maybe you don't know, because you weren't chair then, so you don't know. So I guess...
You know what? This, thank you, thank you, thank you. Very good questions. So let's go back. It was at the previous Public Works Committee, they approved it, sent to Finance, you have some of the two committee members that were at, sitting on Public Works, including the mayor, goes to Finance, now from Finance to Council. So it went to through the two standing committees, and then it ends up here. So the question is, the two members that were, that sit on both Public Works and Finance, maybe they can give us the answers. I wasn't there.
Counsel Twill, I already gave you the answers. I brought it up at Public Works, and I brought it up at Finance. It's not there. So I'm asking you, or asking someone to add a friendly amendment to make it for 12 months? What's so difficult about that? Counsel Matarde.
I think it'd be appropriate to ask the management team here what was in the terms of the conditions of the tender when it was submitted. It would indicate whether or not it was like a closed tender at a point in time of when we accepted it, or if it's an open-ended for a year that we could continue to procure from that tender. We're asking a lot of questions here, and I see a lot of red buzzers over there who want to answer these questions. So let's see if we can get the questions answered over here.
Counsel Twill, you want to defer to your staff?
Mr...
Okay.
Thank you, your worship. This tender included a piggyback clause whereby the city could return to the vendor and ask them if they still have vehicles available at this price. This evening, we are simply looking to purchase the 13 for Public Works, and you will eventually see the three, four, Water and Sewer. There was not a resolution that came forward to you in the past for the 16 combined, it was 13 Public Works or three working through Water and Sewer. In the future, we'll bring them, be able to try and dovetail those two things, but the vehicles are coming through two different standing committees that have timing challenges, and then through to Finance. But the resolution before you now is for the purchase of 13 vehicles at that price. If in the future we did find that we need additional vehicles, we can go back to that vendor based on the tender document that was issued that includes a piggyback clause where we can ask them if they still have those vehicles available to sell to us at that price.
Yeah. To clarify, the piggyback clause was added to put the 13 with the three. That's what was the piggyback.
The piggyback clause was included in that tender that went out looking for this.
To add the 13 to the three. That's...
It was included in the tender that originally had, was just looking for three.
Right.
City Corporation recognized that they also had a need for 13, so we increased the number, the quantity of vehicles in that tender.
Okay, Counsel Matarde, again, is just repeating what I'm repeating. Is it for six months, 12 months, 18 months, 24 months?
There is no timeframe associated...
Let's put a timeline. That's what I'm asking.
But we don't know if they're going to have those 25-year models available for six months, 12 months, 18 months.
Not to purchase any more over the 13 plus the three.
If the city or utility recognizes a need for additional vehicles, we'd bring that resolution back to council for your approval at that time, if we can secure that price again. At this time, we're simply looking to buy the 13 and the three, and that's what we're asking council's approval for, as opposed to, at this time, adding a timeframe where council's saying, go and buy any quantity of vehicles you want over the next month. So we'll come back to you if we're able to secure that pricing for additional vehicles.
Well, it's the resolution right here. Counsel McCabe.
Thank you. This is my second time. I think we had a lot of discussion last time about even the fact of how we went out and how we're going to improve our procurement and our tendering. So for me, I'm not interested in any piggyback clause at all. I think we have to do better with our tendering process anyway, so I would like to not add any amendments to this resolution. We can put the resolution to move ahead on the recommendation to purchase these vehicles because that was the proper tendering that happened, and moving forward, we do it the right way.
Question?
No, no amendment, right?
No, I can't move an amendment. As Counsel Twill said, I can't move. Well, I know that.
Which could have done it, maybe like, at Public Works or...
Now, my second time here, just to clarify then, what I'm hearing from Mr. McEwen is that they can go back and piggyback and get more vehicles, and then bring the vehicles back to us for approval. But what we're saying is that we don't want that. We want, you can buy the 13 and the three from Water and Sewer, but if you're doing anything more, a new tender has to go out. So I just want to understand, is that what I'm voting on? That you won't be buying any more on this tender? It has to be a new tender, no piggybacking? I just don't, I don't understand if that's...
We'd have to build something in to say that.
Yeah.
That needs to be added in the amendment.
This is a one-time purchase, because in the tender document, they had the piggyback clause, correct? You have the piggyback clause in the original tender document?
Yes, so we put out a tender, and at the time, it was our understanding that there was a wish to have something so that in the future, rather than having to re-tender, and if you could hold a price from a previous time period, that it would be beneficial for the city to make that purchase.
That's never been discussed here at council about any piggyback clause, so I think that there's, that's not. For me, I'm not supporting it if that's what we have to support. I'm supporting a one-time tender only.
Okay. Question called? Oh, this, wait now. Second time.
I think we just need to get that clarification, because, again, I came here with, I had reservations before on the tendering and the procurement process. I came here to say, we followed a bit of a process, albeit it wasn't good, and now I'm coming to find out that we can, this is open-ended, and I didn't agree entirely for it to be what it was. I would like to see this be cleaned up. Let's get the 16 vehicles on this tender, we're done, and then any future vehicles that we need, we go to tender, and they come through the competitive process, and we can hopefully do it. I mean, I don't know how we get to that, I don't know if we need something, I'll put in, do we need something amended here on this to say that, or is that just understood? Is that an understood practice by the management team?
Counsel Twill.
Understood. Well, what's understood is that, confusing as it sounds, considering the debate that took place here tonight, our staff are remaining steadfast, and our legal counsel that due process was followed. So you know what? Having said all of that, I'm going to be following their recommendation. That's why we have our professional staff, and when our most senior person here, our solicitors are here, you know, they're saying that we've followed due process, and our director and our manager, that we followed due process, and then I'm going to go with their recommendation.
Okay. Question? Question's called? Yay? Okay. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Counsel Duran?
Not in favor.
All those against? Okay, I have three. Counsel Matarde?
The province is holding up the trust.
Yep.
So if we don't do this, and also the process, I'll support the resolution.
Okay. All those in favor again, please put up your hand. Okay. All those against? Counsel Duran?
Not in favor.
Four, three. Carrie?
No, I agree, sir. I agree.
Yep. How long we been discussing this? Okay.
Well, and I'd like to...
Just reiterate, I wasn't part of it.
No, I know, but I'm just saying...
Yeah, no, yeah.
Just so somebody says, oh, yeah, we're around this resolution.
Yeah. Anyways, minutes...
I wasn't involved, I wasn't there at the previous, at the Public Works Committee?
Yeah.
Public Works Committee.
I wasn't there at Finance, and I don't know why these issues weren't resolved at Public Works and at Finance. That's what I find a real mystery.
Yeah. Okay, we got another resolution? Can you, CAO Fraser, please read the resolution?
I'm afraid to read this one, your worship.
Oh, I think this should be all right.
Water and Sewer Utility Resolution Number One, your worship, moved by Counselor John McLeer, seconded by Counselor Justin Matarde, that the city of Charlestown proceeds with the procurement of three 2025 half-ton crew cab, four-by-four trucks, and accepts the bid submitted by Summerside Chrysler Dodge in the amount of $62,350 plus applicable taxes each, and that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Okay. Questions called?
No, can I speak to this?
Yes, you can, Counsel Duran. I can't see you be, yes.
No problem, thank you.
Counsel Duran, could you just use the, raise the hand so the tracey can see it? I just can't, do you not even have that function? Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
No, no problem, thank you. So when this went out, it went out under Water and Sewer for three vehicles. So we had three submissions, and then 13 more were added to it, and then two other submissions were disqualified. So here, we're back, lo and behold, a couple of weeks later, and we're going with the one person that wasn't disqualified. You know, it's just so much confusion over this. I know the Water and Sewer needs trucks, and you know, this was in our budget to do it, but it seems that if we would have played by the rules the right way, this would have been here, we would have voted on it, 100% support it. But here we are looking at this resolution with two other people, Charlestown companies that were disqualified. You know, why didn't we go out, just like the resolutions are now, three for here and 13 the other way? You wouldn't have had all this confusion. So I know it's a, it has become a mess, so I can't support this, even though the Water and Sewer Department needs the vehicles in a prudent manner, and they need them right away, but I just can't, I can't be a part of this process, so I'm not supporting it. Thank you.
Okay. Question? Question's called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay. Did just raise them again, raise, please raise your hand. Okay. All those against? Counsel Duran, yea or nay?
Not in favor.
Motion lost.
Do you have Water and Sewer?
Okay, no, guys, it's, the vote's done.
Your worship, if I could clarify that...
Yeah?
Through the chair to Counselor Duran, it's Dan here. I just wanted to clarify the process. So there was only one tender, and it was for 16 vehicles, and Public Works, and the utility got together to estimate how many vehicles they would need collectively for the city. So there was only, one tender went out, and that was for 16 vehicles. The two disqualified bidders only bid on three because they didn't catch the increase in the quantity. The reason that they're broken into 13 and three is because the utility is a separate corporation, and we need a separate resolution for those three vehicles, and that has been consistent from, I think, the beginning of this process. Once the tender closed, finally, we had one bidder that was recommended, that was supported by the legal information we received, and the reason it's 13 and three versus 16 was just to recognize the fact that we have different corporations that need resolutions in and of themselves to have those pieces of equipment. So just to recap, the, what we have now is the exact, the identical process, and in one department, we've approved the purchase, and in the other department, we've declined or denied the purchase of those vehicles. So we're, for whatever reason, we're not being consistent. So I just wanted to be clear that the process was followed fairly consistently through the, if there was one unfortunate aspect of this, is that we had two interested bidders that unfortunately missed the addendums and didn't bid on the proper supply of equipment. That was disappointing for the city, and I'm sure it was disappointing for them, but unfortunately, our legal information suggests that we really have to stick to the process that was in place, and we've learned some lessons through this, and we'll take those to the next round of tendering. Thanks.
Okay. Could I respond to that, Mayor Brown?
Go ahead.
Okay. So, you know, you say one tender went out, so the one tender went out for three vehicles. Seven days later, they come in for 13 more, and the two, there was three people bid on the three vehicles. And then the addendum came in seven days later. And then those two other companies didn't pick it up. So they're, they've been disqualified. But they, they would have been qualified if it only remained three. So that's what I'm saying. There, there was addendum put in, you know. I, I just find there was confusion in this. You know, all these companies probably bid on three trucks. Maybe they couldn't get 16 and only the other one could. But that's, that's the reason. We've, we've talked at this at the Water and Sewer, we talked at this at Public Works. How we, we got to get it all together. And, and that's why I can't support it. The confusion and the disqualification of, of Charlottetown companies to, to my end, confusion to me is why I can't support it. That was my opinion. So the, the one, the one tender that went out only had three. Seven days later, addendum came in and, and then that's when the disqualification came. So that's what I'm trying to say. You know, that, that's the way I see it. That's only my opinion. Thank you.
Counsel Twill.
You know, we keep referencing the procurement bylaw. Procurement bylaw's been talked about well over a year now. Are we, are we any closer to a pure procurement bylaw being brought forth to City Council for, for examination and for, for discussion? So that we can finally have it approved? Are we any closer or are we just, just talking about it? That's my first question.
Yeah, wait, wait now, just ask, what's the other question? Is it about the tender?
Well, I guess the, the question I have is, I mean, in relation to the Chair of Water and Sewer, you know, and the discussions that took place at Water and Sewer. And again, Public Works, I wasn't there. Our legal people are saying everything's copacetic. Was there any other options that were examined to maybe arrive at an outcome that would be much more clear or much more favorable? For example, to our businesses here in the Charlottetown area where, where in fact they weren't disqualified? Was there, like, was there any other options or any other avenues or ways that this could have been pursued? Again, from an administrative and from a legal sense?
Counsel Dron, do you have any response?
No, we, we, we did discuss this to say, okay, from now on, let, let's, let's put out a two-week tender and then after seven days, you know, make everyone aware if there's an addendum. It can't go two or three or four days before the end. You know, just to make it fair for everyone? That was just one of the questions or it just came up. To see if we could make it fair for everyone. Because we don't want to disqualify people. We want the best price, you know, get everybody involved. That's what we were trying to come up with. But nothing, nothing came out of that concrete. You know, we, we look to do better. We keep saying this that we're going to try to do better. But, you know, there, there's no concrete plan here yet. If that, if that tries to answer your question, Counsel Twill.
And Counsel McElair, can you respond to the procurement issue? Where are we at with the bylaw?
Thank you, Counsel Twill. I'll defer that to CFO Dan. We've, whatever update that you have in terms of the last update at the Finance Committee meeting, I'm not sure if there's anything more to add or not. Thank you.
Thank you through the, His Worship to the Chair. So yes, the procurement bylaw is now the top priority of, of the Finance Group. Now that we're through budget and we have a, a finance manager in place. I have a meeting, be spending a good part of the day tomorrow on the procurement bylaw. So it is, it's number one on the hit parade right now. So looking forward to, to getting something tangible to Council. We did have, were 12 items identified that we want some clarification from Council and we'll, we'll bring those back for your consideration.
Counsel Twill, second question.
Question to the Director. Can you tell me or give me a thumbnail sketch on how much progress has been achieved thus far?
On the procurement?
On the procurement, procurement bylaw? Give me a thumbnail sketch on how much has been achieved?
Yeah, there's been a substantial amount of progress. There's been probably 10 precedent bylaws that we've reviewed, municipal procurement bylaws. And we're, we've, we've narrowed the issues down to, I think, 12, 12 issues that we want direction on. There's, in, in many aspects of procurement, there are a number of options that you can go with. You know, if we just talk about the vehicles that we were talking about, you can, you can tender for a, you know, 16 vehicles today. You can have a standing offer that says I can buy this work truck for the next 24 months at this price. Advantages and disadvantages to both. But it, it is a relatively complex piece of work. So that creates the best value for the city and doesn't create more problems than it solves. So we're working on it and I think there's been substantial progress made.
CFO Sue Fraser?
Just to add to what the CFO is, is stating, I just wanted to, to speak to the fact that I think most of the concern here this evening isn't so much about what a bylaw would say. It was about the process that was followed. And, and two of the three bidders did not see the addendum, which is the bottom line fact of the matter at the end of the day. We have addendums that happen all the time with tenders. It's, it's not an unusual thing to have happened. But what happened in this situation is the number, the quantity of what we're looking for did jump substantively. But CFO can speak to this probably better than I. But we are also looking at a better way of delivering our tenders so that when people are going in and downloading our tender documents or, or you can tell that there's activity in there and we can also find better ways of reaching out to people that are interested. So Dan, maybe you could speak to that in a little more detail because there are opportunities for us to do our tendering process better. That's purely an administrative thing. Where we would have seen that we had three bidders looking at the product and looking at the tender and would have known that we needed to circle back to those three for any changes. So Dan, if you can just speak further to that conversation?
Sure, thank you, CFO Sue. So yes, there are electronic options, web-based platforms, bids and tenders. There's another one that Bonfire, I believe, is the one the University of Princeton Allen uses. These platforms, there is a cost attached, both for the city and for the, for the supplier that's looking to bid on the business. But what it does do is it, it, it provides a login of who actually has downloaded the, the tender document so that then we can proactively reach out to them to advise them of, of an addendum if, if there is one. So that, that is another aspect of what we'll be looking at. The, the challenge with the, with the work truck tender is that we had no idea who was bidding. So if we had reached out to a couple that we thought were bidding and didn't reach out to some others that turned out to be bidders, but, but, but we didn't reach out to them, we would be treating those two that we reached out to unfairly. So fairness is a bit of a double-edged sword and, and we have, that was the reason that we ended up with the recommendation from staff moving forward is that it is the most fair in this, in the, in this circumstance because we're treating the three bidders equally in this case, unfortunately.
Okay. Can we move on to 4C? Two finance resolutions. Sidewalk, sidewalk design and grants. Okay.
Your Worship, the Finance Audit Tendering and Administration Resolution Number One is related to the grants and it's moved by Counselor John McElair, seconded by Deputy Mary Yankoff, that the city be resolved that the City of Charlottetown provides grants to external community organizations as outlined in the report, in the attached report to Finance, FIN 192025, for the fiscal period of 2025-2026, and that the City of Charlottetown provide grants to external organizations as outlined in page six of the attached report.
Counsel Twill? Just one second. Go ahead. Go. Yeah?
Before the operational budget was approved by City Council, the, the issue of the grants had come up. I had raised the issue of grants and how the grants are being administered and what's the criteria? And I asked senior administration, when you go back to the discussion that had taken place that evening, there was a substantial, substantial amount of discussion that had taken place. And I, I can't, maybe the rest of the council can. I don't know what the criteria is, why some organizations would be approved, why some organizations would not, not be approved. Then I asked, asked, what is the mandate of the City of Charlottetown and City Council? How does this affect our core services that we're mandated to provide? Because when we get through that process, whether it be from a capital or operational perspective, you know, we're, we're, we're fighting over dollars, whether it's thousands or millions or whatever the case may be, this project gets approved or that project doesn't get approved. And yet we're sending about $7 million out the door, tax concessions, grants and other, other grants that are approved by, in other departments that, that, that approve these, these particular grants. So again, I certainly don't want a mischaracterization of, well, you know, we're against this grant or this organization, that organization. That's not the, the discussion that I was looking for. What I was looking for from a philosophical, holistic, from a general perspective, what is the mandate of Charlottetown City Council? What is the mandate of the city corporation? What are we responsible for? And when you have those amount of dollars going out the door and without referencing some of the grants, but, you know, some of them are receiving tax concessions plus a grant. So why, like, like, how can we go through such an exercise when I don't believe, and please correct me if I'm wrong, and if I'm wrong, I'll be the first one to stand up and apologize, but we don't have any criteria where we can pinpoint and say to the constituency out there, the people that are paying the taxes, you know what? We can't pave your street, we can't fix the potholes, can't put a sports field in your respective community because we don't have the money. But we have $7 million, total of $7 million plus all these grants. So I think we're going to have to come to a, a conclusion relatively soon as to, A, what our responsibility is, B, what's the criteria? And what do we tell our constituency that are, that are, that are respectfully asking for the core services to be enhanced and improved in their neighborhood and their community? And I don't know if we can really do that. I really don't.
Thank you. Counsel Matard?
Thank you, Your Worship. Yeah, I just wanted to touch a little bit on what Counselor Twill was talking about. When reviewing these, this $7.7 million, if I understand the, these numbers correctly, some of them, some organizations are getting multiple grants in various areas. I noticed that, I was highlighting a number of them. Just, you know, curious as to, you know, how that, how that works. Like, for instance, just, just an example, again, just an example. Under arts and culture grants, there is, you know, two line items on there for particular businesses that are receiving two different types of grants, one grand lieu and one operating. You know, so there's, there's multi-lined items for, for particular instances. I look at what was done in '24, '25, approved budget. I think it was about $6.7 million, $6.9 million, I think we're up to $7.7, if I got that correct. So as Counselor Twill indicated, you know, we're, we're being asked here as an organization to cut and to, you know, scale down our infrastructure across the city because of our sidewalks and roads and, and all of the infrastructure that we have. However, our grant ask and requests are going up. And we're, we're not, we're not prioritizing any of that. As far as I can tell, we're just, we're just saying, okay, and making the recommendation. You know, staff is coming in with a recommendation. I don't, I guess that's based on their applications or if it's just based on previous years or a phone call request from the organization to say this is how much money we'd like to have. And then, and then it's coming to council here for, you know, a draft operating budget allocation. So I'm seeing an increase in there, but we're also decreasing, you know, our police, our fire, our infrastructure. At what point do we take a really hard look at this holistically, the $7.7 million? And start to look back at our partners out in the community and say, you know, we're here to support the best we can. However, we also need for you to, you know, to, to take some cuts in some areas as well to allow us to continue with our mandate here in the city, which is providing the services that we need to our residents. I, I'm not, that's what I thought the discussion was going to behead. When it came, when we talked about putting the operational budget through, we thought about, let's, let's get that approved, this bucket. And then we, as a council, would come in here and determine what we wanted to do with that. I'm not seeing that here. Like I saw, I mean, I know it's, I'm not sure if all these are approved and they're, and they're, and the money is being allocated right now. But I thought we were going to determine how, who was going to actually get what here at the end of the day.
So if you go back to March 24th, when we discussed the budget and the budget we passed March 31st, everything that's in the agreements, grants, they were all approved except community grants, which is on page two of the document I have. Yeah. So that's, that's what we discussed at Finance. And Counsel McElair, I can let you hop in there because you're the Chair of the committee. But that's what we approved on the 24th and then the 31st of March, except the grants for the Charlottetown Harbor Authority, Seniors Active Living Center, the list that's there. That's what we didn't approve. Counsel McElair?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Brown. And to, and to Counselor Twill and Counselor Matard's concerns and points, very valid, very real and very probably timely. This does, this does have to be, this does have to be looked at in terms of the, the external grants excluding, I'm not, I'm not referencing the, the community grants. But I like to circle back to, to Counselor, Counselor Twill's and Matard's. And I know, I know Deputy Mayor Yankoff has got some points and concerns with the external grants, you know, as well. But on the resolution, just if I could come back to the resolution, the first part of the resolution on the community grants, if I could just speak to that first. And I will come back to the comments on the rest of the, on the rest of the grant piece, the, the global number. But if I could just have your attention on the community grants thing. And I'm on page, I'm on page 15 of what I'm looking at on the community grants, where you'll see, you'll see the committee recommendation there, a grand total of $562,464. And then there's an unallocated budget amount there, $92,649. Well, if you take the unallocated $92,649 off the $562, the total for the committee recommendation for grants to the community organizations is a total of $469,815. And that is all in your committee recommendations there. You can see the various, you can see the various numbers. So if, if this resolution is supported tonight on the community grant piece or the first part of the resolution, that's what Finance Committee is recommending or for your consideration here this evening. The total of those community grants is $469,815. And there's an unallocated amount left in our budget for grants of $92,649. So again, the total of that $469,815, you can see all the committee recommendations there on that, you know, you know, on that column. So are there any concerns or questions on the allocation of the dollar amount on the community grants piece? I'm not talking about the rest of it. Well, I'll come to the rest of it.
Okay.
Are we okay on what we're allocating?
Okay. Just one second. Counsel, Counsel Matard?
Thank you, thank you, Counsel McElair.
No. Counsel Matard?
Sorry. I think it's part and parcel to the whole discussion. I want to go back to a point that the Worship made was, you indicated that during budget time, my recollection of what we were doing was to get through to the budget processes. We did identify that we would, we had in the range of seven some million dollars. And that was a bucket that we were going to come back as a council and we were going to go through that and determine how much of that we were going to allocate out to the various grants and subsidies and everything else that was there. But we wanted to pass the budget. So we did that. That didn't mean we were passing what we're seeing here. And what concerns me more about this is that, if I'm reading this correctly, on page 20 in the bottom, is last year we had in about a 6.9 approved budget. We have our, our grant requests that are coming in right now to the City of Charlottetown are $9.4 million. That's, that's $3 million more or $3.5 million more than what was last year. Like that in itself should be raising some flags and concerns. Like, that in itself should be raising some flags and concerns as to, you know, what we're, what we're being asked to provide. And if people, and if our, and if the grantees are listening and listening to us as a council, slashing and trimming our other budget areas for infrastructure, but at, like, I just don't see how those things are. And then we have staff recommending 7.3, but then we have the draft operational budget at 9.7. So, again, we're in this, you know, we're in between 7 and 1/2 million to $10 million.
No, the, the grantee request, I'm just clarifying it, was 9,414,000. But what was approved for the budget for 2025, less the community grants, was 7,737,000. You have to go to the last, to the last column.
I'm looking at that.
Yeah, it says, draft operating budget allocation. Landy, is that correct?
Actually, 9.7, yeah.
Just.
Just, Chair, through to Counselor Matart, yeah, I apologize, there was, there was an error on the report that we caught earlier on today.
Okay, that's the two that's coming off, and the other, okay.
Yeah, and the.
I'm looking at the wrong one.
The updated document was put up to the OneDrive, which is a total of 7.7 million.
Yes.
It was a $2 million dollar allocation.
So, it's just, I just want to clarify that.
I mean, I.
No, no, I just want to clarify, it's not, it's not jumping from 6.9 million to 9.4. That was what we were pressed.
Okay, that's fair, but it was, but it was originally, it was asked.
That was asked, but that wasn't what was approved in our budget.
But the point I'm trying to make, the point I'm making, is we have our community out there who are asking for millions and millions and millions of dollars, to the tune of what was originally up to 9 million. We've, we've since moved a line item, if I, I caught the email late this evening, so I apologize, but we're down to seven. It still doesn't negate what I'm trying to, the point I'm trying to make here. The point I'm trying to make here is we have $7.7 million, and this council was going to determine how we were going to spend that. And we may only spend 5 million of that. And we may take 2 million of that and put it on more roads and more sidewalks in Cheryl Town. That was what we were going to determine. That is not what I'm hearing here today. I'm being asked to vote on the, the community one, which I'm in full support of supporting the community, but we were going to have a discussion about how much that was going to be. The discussion seemed to have just been had at the finance level.
No.
Who is saying at the committee recommendation, I have assumed the committee recommendation was at the Finance Department, for the page 15, which was the 30 or so, Community Grants one that we're calling.
Yeah. Okay. Counselor McLaer. No, well, he has to respond.
Well, if you don't do that, I'll, I'll be commuted.
Excuse me.
You know.
Counselor McLaer, just put your.
Yeah, again, I think you referenced it, Mayor Brown, like, when we passed, when the council, we passed the capital and operating budgets on, on March 31st, the number, the number that was in here for, 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 for grants was the, basically, the 7.7, correct? That, that's, that's what we, that's what we, that's what was, that's what was approved. And the, the piece that, that's come back regards in community grants, that's been, I guess, I don't know if that's always been talked about, but it certainly has been for the, I guess this is my third budget, where, where it's been discussed on, on the community side. So, these, the, the, the bulk of these other external grants and agreements does have to be, does have to be looked at, but the dollar amount that was allocated for the, for the, for the 2526 budget year for these grants has been, has been allocated and accounted for. As to what that looks like going forward, to Counselor Twill and Counselor Matart and Deputy Mayor Yankoff's concerns, taxes and grants and rule off and the different arrangements, that whole thing does, does, does support, and I'm certainly supportive of dealing with it and starting the discussion at the Finance Committee level and really digging into that, that whole thing, and you could probably make, you could probably make a meeting out of this thing, in terms of, in terms of the whole, the whole grant piece and what we're doing, you know.
Yeah. Counsel, no, wait, no, just.
That's, that's, you know, that, that's all I can say, like, the, 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 the allocation and what we're doing for grant money has been, the, the numbers, the dice can cast in that number for, for, for 2526 budget year.
Counsel, Counselor McCabe.
Thank you. I, I think Counselor Matart, you're right, I think we were supposed to have a meeting to discuss this, that's what we were doing. So, I'm not sure if people just understood it in different perspectives. We do have a grant policy that we approved three years ago. Have these been vetted through our grant policy? Have they, you know, it's very unclear. I'm seeing government, provincial government organizations that were providing, the, the ask was 60,000, staff recommended 25, and the Finance Committee recommended 62,740. What's that for?
Is that under the grants?
Yeah, that's for PEI. But that's a provincial entity. Why are we giving them 62,000? Like, there's way too many, way too much discussion that has to happen here tonight before I'll be passing any resolution. Tonight's free-for-all here, it's great, I have no idea, so I won't be supporting it.
Counselor Twill.
When, when I brought this up, that evening, we were discussing the operational budget, and then we get into the grants, and we really didn't get into the grants that night. We were there to discuss and approve the core services that we were going to be providing for our citizens, and we would take another evening to discuss the tax concessions, as well as the grants, as well as community grants, and everything in between. What I requested, with all due respect to our senior staff, did not happen. I asked from a philosophical perspective as to, you know, just some, some, some very basic fundamental questions. What is our mandate? What are we responsible for? How can we expect to provide core services like Counselor Matart said, you know, infrastructure, sports field development, water and sewer, our public works? We're, we're asking for another crew to, to do patching. I mean, some of the streets in our city, I mean, they're, they're in deplorable shape, and the city's growing. There's more traffic on our city streets now than there ever was, and this is not even at the peak time of the year. Yet, have we really effectively allotted the amount of dollars that's truly required to, to effectively address our infrastructure needs, whether it be from a capital or from an operational? I, I don't think so, and that's why I said earlier tonight, I was opposed to the agenda and the stacking the agenda, because I want to have these, have these discussions and do it so that we can have a good discussion and, and, and make an informed decision. I, like Counselor McCabe, I'm certainly not prepared to, to, to approve all of this, there's just so many inequities, and some organizations are, are being awarded, some organizations are not being awarded. I, I don't know how, how do we actually explain this? If you were to get a phone call tonight from a resident, well, what did you base your decision on? Outline the criteria. Can we actually do that? If I was to take a phone call tonight after people watching this meeting, what did you base your decision on? Outline the criteria. I, I can't do it. I really can't do it. But why is Company X getting, getting tax concessions plus a grant? Why is that? Who do they know at City Hall? That's the first thing they're going to say. Who do, who do you know at City Hall? Do you have to know someone at City Hall in order to get these, these financial incentives or financial grants or whatever the case may be? Well, like, we're, we're leaving ourselves wide open to be heavily criticized by the community. And I was trying to be reasonable when I first brought this up. I want it from our senior staff to look at all of this and come back from a holistic, from a philosophical. Look, here's what council's responsible for. Here's what, here's your mandate. This other stuff, although it's important and I respect every organization that, that submitted a request, but, like, I'm so conflicted. And then, and then, we talk about going after the province, wanting more money from the province. Well, if I was Minister of Finance, for example, I'd say, well, what are you coming to us for? You just filed $7 million out the door. Money doesn't, money doesn't seem to be an issue. So, so what are you coming to us for?
Counselor Twill.
Yes.
This is your second time, you're into four minutes. I have to move on. Deputy Mayor Yankoff.
You have to move on.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, and probably, probably what we should do next time, let's avoid having the resolution read, so we can have as much discussion as we want, because once the resolution's on the floor, it's two questions each, so we might want to remember that for next time.
No, 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 just on that point.
Yep.
Resolution has to be put on the floor, that's where you have to do discussion.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you, Worship. So, I sit on finance, and the only thing I can come up with is that the 27 community grants that were discussed at the finance meeting, the reason that those were the only ones discussed is they're the only ones that fall under finance. There's a whole bunch of other pages of grants from all the various different departments that were never, ever vetted through their committees, they just were vetted through staff. So, I think that might be where the confusion is, because going back and listening to all the various meetings, none of these, not, like, you'll see them, they're, they're all there, that staff had the recommendations, but they were not vetted through committee during operational budget time, from, from what I can tell, any other department or committee that I sit on. So, these are the ones that fall under finance, I'm assuming. I had questions as well. I also had confusion on the night that we approved the budgets. I was under the same understanding as Counselor Matart, McCabe, and Counselor Twill, that there was still going to be this conversation about this allocated money. So, you know, if, if those have already been approved, then bad on me because I didn't know I approved it. So, I guess my question is, why, why did finance get to go through their committee grants and give a recommendation and bring them back? And all the other departments only have staff recommendations, and apparently we've already passed them in the budget.
Yeah. Well, under economic tourism, cultural development, event hosting grants, Laura Lee is out there. We went over these before the budget process. Sustainability, environment and sustainability micro grants, I was at a meeting where the budget was discussed, that was discussed. No, just let me finish.
Point of order.
Just let me finish. Parks and Recreation, Parks, let me finish. They're, they're all there.
Restability, for example, I asked a question about micro grants? No, no, we don't do micro grants. I know it's there, but I asked a question, and they said, no, we don't do micro grants. So, once again, misinformation.
Anyways, resolution's on the floor. Questions called. Deputy Mayor Yankoff's second term.
Yeah, nobody answered my questions.
Well, I just answered, on festival events, it's under, it's on page two of four with the, so I don't know what page that is on your digital copy.
So, there's staff recommendations, but there's no committee recommendations there.
Well, if the committee approved the budget to go to finance, that would have been, in essence, approval of recommendation. And I know with water and wastewater, Counselor Duran, where you have watershed association grants, that was presented in the budget. I know that Richard was there, Mr. McEwen. Again, I.
Sure. So, this is my second time to speak, so I'd like to just be able to say that I have lots of questions about all of the other grants and the other departments. So, I guess, bad on me, I don't feel I had the opportunity to ask those questions and get them answered. And so, if I've approved the budget and I wasn't aware of it, I know, my hand went up, I approved the operational budget, I get it. So, I guess I'll just have to be more, more aware next time, because I feel like, you know, the tail's wagging the dog a little bit here, and maybe it's just, maybe that's my bad, that I missed it. But I do know that this time next year, if we don't have this conversation about this money that we're spending and let these folks that apply for grants know that we are going to be having a whole new conversation around them, not because we don't want to support our community, but because we have a full-service city that we can't get all the stuff done that we need to get done. So, I will ask if, if council will support that we give direction to staff this evening, that we ensure, that we commit tonight, that we have this conversation before next year's budget on the $7 million that we give out in grants, so that we're not sitting here this time next year, like we are right now. So, can I ask council?
I'm going to ask the chair.
Or the chair? I know that I've already emailed the chair, and he has indicated that he was in support of that, but I think generally, I think this, all of council maybe, I don't know. Anyways.
Do you want to take it back to, John? Can you just?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, and to Counselor, or Deputy Mayor, and to Counselor Twill and Counselor Matart, you know, this is, this is, you know, a great moment to, to dig into this. I'm certainly prepared to, to lead it, to see that it gets, you know, to see that it gets dealt with. I know, I know the staff have, have, you know, started to kind of get, get us kind of maybe set for, for perhaps, you know, getting ready to look at this and have the discussion, and, and we'll get it started with finance, and any council, any councils are more than welcome to sit in on, on any of those meetings. And I think it's, you know, I think it is timely to, to look at this, you know, to look at this whole, whole global thing of what we're doing with grants with the various organizations and stakeholders. Thank you.
Counselor McCabe.
Thank you for my second question. And like Deputy Mayor Yankoff just indicated, I also approved our budget, so bad on me for approving something, but my understanding was that the grants were being parked and we were bringing them back to council for further discussion. So, that's when I approved the budget. With the grants in them, it was with the understanding that there was going to be opportunity to look at all of them. I understand that there's agreements in here that we're bound to and that we're tied to. I think Deputy Mayor sent a really good email yesterday asking for almost like a binder of grant money, community donation agreements, so that it's really simple, and I think it absolutely has to happen before budget time, and I think it's council, the whole type of discussions. It can't go through just a committee, because otherwise it takes hours in here for us to understand. That's where we have to have the opportunity to come together as a group and all hear the information and have opportunity for input, Your Worship.
Counselor Duran.
Thank you, Mayor Brown, and I agree with Counselor Twill and everybody else, what they're saying. You know, we approved the budget, I thought we were going to discuss the grants, but just in particular, like, we were talking about, Counselor Twill had mentioned, we're trimming everything that we can. And then you come into this community grant, and I'll just take two on the table. You know, I'm, I'm not against community people wanting grants and help, and I understand that. But when you're looking at the Harbor Authority or UPEI, I mean, I think last year the Harbor Authority was 1.6 million in profit, and, and UPEI has 180 million operating budget. And here we're giving money to those organizations, and then we're saying, well, we're not, we're not going to do any, you know, water infrastructure pipes that are 100 years old. You know, it's just, it's just something that, I guess, as a council, we have to sit down and determine where we're going to go and what money, you know, like, like Counselor Twill said, is going out the door rather than fixing our own infrastructure. So, I, like others, thought we were going to go through this, but, you know, I, I passed the budget too, because I thought we were going to come back to this. Thank you.
Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mayor. Are we going through these line by line tonight? Like, as Counselor Matart asked, like, and everybody else is saying the same thing, that we, we're on the belief that we were parking this until after the budget was approved. So, if we're not going through this line by line tonight, we're just voting on passing what is recommended to us, is that right?
Counselor McLaer.
Yes, it's here for your, it's here for your consideration on the community grant piece, if that's what you're talking about. Yeah, so the community grants, the recommendation is for the, basically, as I said earlier, the, the total grants, the committee recommendations on that last column, the total grant allocation is 469,815, that's the total. And those are the, the various amounts are there. And that's for council to decide if they want to support that or not, or do something, do something different.
Counselor McTard, what did you want?
Well, I guess there seems to be a, a lot of uncertainty here this evening. I think the, the clear message here is that council needs to come together very quickly. We may need another special. need another special meeting to go through this process. I think it's quite clear that this council wants to support our community in as many ways as we can, but we need to do our due diligence and ensure that we are spending taxpayers' money appropriately against our other services that we have to do. So I am going to put forward a deferral and tell that we can have that meeting as quickly as possible to go through this process.
Okay. Counsel McKinnon seconded. So, just to clarify, again, clarify that the issue discussion, the budget has already been passed for all those other, you know, Counsel Twill, just one second, okay? Can you let someone talk? So, we have to ensure that those amounts that were approved for festival events are already being told that they are getting the money. So, and we discussed it on the 24th, and then passed the budget on the 31st, with everything done except what we have in the package for you. Counsel McCabe, no, Counsel Twill.
With all due respect, Mr. Mayor, when I brought this up before the operational budget was passed, and before the speech, or the budget was brought down towards the latter part of March, I was under the understanding that we were going to come back collectively as a council, and we were going to review criteria, we were going to review our mandate. Again, from a philosophical, we were supposed to have a good discussion, and not get into any, any organizations to see where we're at, because we're in a terrible predicament here, we really are. When, I have to say to Mrs. Smith, I'm sorry, we can't fix the sidewalks in front of your place, I know you've waited for 15 years, but we can't, or a street can't get resurfaced because we don't have the proper allocation of funds, but we can approve all these respective organizations, and I respect each and one, each and every one of them. But, what is our mandate, folks? What's the criteria? Nobody's answered that here tonight. That's what I asked for. Mr. Jenkins, that's what I asked for. Discussion that had taken place at our last meeting, you know, you've heard the discussion here tonight, come back with, you know, come back with concrete, checks and balances, come back with, you know, here's where we need to go, here's where investment, the dollars for the taxpayers should go, and that didn't happen here tonight, we're just here to, I don't want to be facetious, but we're just here to rubber stamp the whole, the whole grants, the grants that are being proposed, and that's not what I requested. So, that's why I second the deferral, and I think it's timely.
Okay. Counsel McCabe.
Thank you, and I'm going to speak to the referral. So, are all these on page 15? I understand what you said, your worship, all those other grants we approved, status quo-
They're done.
They're done, I understand that. We need to do better moving forward, because I don't like that I approved something that I didn't understand that I approved, and that's on me. But, all of these on page 15 that we're looking at, are they all spread out amongst different departments? Are they all finance grants? Do you know, that's my first part of the question.
If you look at the grant request at Shellahan Harbor Authority, that's correct me if I'm wrong, Lane or Mr. Jenkins, that's cash in lieu of taxes, correct?
Okay, so I think we need a very clear, a better explanation for what the asks are supposed to be for, that should have been done through our grant policy, because they would have had to apply for some money, unless it was a 20-year longstanding agreement with Shellahan Port Authority, but that should be still clearly indicated to us, that this is not really a negotiable one, that we're signed into a locked agreement, we have a 30,000, whatever. Which ones are negotiable? What's the ask for? Again, what do we, what does sport P E I, what do they request in 62,000 from the city for, under the province? I think those are really important things that we need answers to, so until we can have that information, we can bring it back with the fire under ready study.
Counsel Matart.
Thank you, just, I want to clarify, yeah, I want, on the deferral, I want a clarification. So, you're indicating that we as a council passed the budget, and therefore we as a council approved all of these line items, with the exception of the finance ones, because some of these are locked in, some of these have agreements, some of them have whatever. I think, yes, we did understand that back at the time we were doing this, however, I will stand by the fact that we said, well, we're still going to come back and review all of these, and determine, you know, exactly what Counsel McCabe said, some of them we do have contractual obligations for, we would check that off and say, okay, we really can't do much about that one. However, the ones that we didn't, we'd be able to look to see which ones are those, but now I'm hearing from you, your worship, is you're saying, too bad you approved the $7 million budget, now that's, that's a lined item that you approved, and the only ones we're really focusing on, that we have any determination here, are the ones that are coming on finance on page 15.
No.
And if that's the case, I think we were all misled, because we, the majority here is saying all the same thing, that we left that meeting saying, yes, we approved 7.7 million dollars, but we didn't approve every line item here in these multi-spreadsheeted-
I personally specifically remembered that this was an area that was contentious, and I said, let's park, I said, let's park this, and then we'll come back to it. So, on the 24th, all those other areas, events, well, I can go over each one of them-
Well, I'm not sure we can all-
I'm not going over each one of them, but all those other areas were agreed to on the 24th, and they were part of the budget on the 31st of March. And, again, you know, we're looking at criteria, one of the strongest criteria is that, how do these grants match up to our strategic plan? The four pillars, environment, social, economic, those are areas that we have to look at also, but that's-
But we don't know, we're just approving a lined item, that's all, that's all we have in front of us is lined item.
No, you get a lined item with a number of requests for funding-
But we don't know.
And Counsel McCabe has asked for clarification, is it a tax concession, is it a grant, that's what we will have to clarify.
So, let me go back to my deferral. Deferral on the floor is to defer so we can come back together as a council, and go through these items, and determine how we best want to spend-
The whole document?
Yeah.
So, then we have to tell all those other, other organizations that, when the budget was passed on March 31st, like, some of that money's going out the door already, because we passed it.
Did we pass the budget, or did we pass the-
We passed the budget with everything in the grants and agreements, except what's on page 15. That's what it was, guys.
Your worship, you're the only one seeing it.
No, I, no.
That whole side doesn't see it this way, I didn't see it this way.
Well, that's-
So, I'm just wondering, how are you the only one that interpreted that?
Because-
Because your finance committee, the three people that sit on finance committee.
There's four of us, including the deputy.
She doesn't see it that way.
And she doesn't see it that way.
Well, guys, look, if you want to put, if you want to put all this on hold, then we have to tell the Laura Lees, and, and our water and wastewater, hold all these grants, because we're going to go through them all, you may make it, and you may not make it.
Well, I think we have to do better of making sure we understand what we're also- No, your worship, excuse me, I wasn't finished talking, you're the only person that understood that, in this room tonight. Did anybody else understand what he's saying tonight?
No, I want to go with the deputy, not the deputy, but Counsel McLaire, who is the Chair of Finance.
No, Counsel McCabe, no, as I said, the, when we passed the budget, the capital and the operating budget on 31st, the, this global number of the 7.7, let's call it, on grants was included in, was included in what we, you know, what we passed, and there were some, there were some inputs during that, during the compilation of that budget that, you know, included, plus, I think somebody who's been sitting around this table longer than me realized some of those grants and LOF, and some of those other arrangements that have been, I shouldn't say been going on indefinitely, but have been going on for some time, and, you know, the Harbor Authority, the, you know, the airport, Federation Center, so, so this, you know, you know, it is a large number, it does have to be looked at, I, you know, I'd like to, the community, you know, the community grant thing, the 400 and some thousand, I think, you know, if there's any way that, you know, the council can have confidence to pass the resolution that we, you know, that we have here this evening to get to, you know, to advance this on, we all recognize that, Deputy Mayor, you kind of beat yourself up, you say, approving something that maybe you weren't clear on, I don't, like, that's, you know, I don't, I, so if there was misunderstanding on that, I don't think there's anything untoward that either myself as Chair, or any staff, or anyone else is not being forthright with here, so, again, I realize the, you know, it's a big number on these external grants and agreements, they do have to be looked at, I will take it upon myself to see that, that we get on top of that, and look at it, and get it back to either council, from the committee to council, and what it's going to look like on the '26, '27 budget years relates to external grants and agreements.
Okay, guys, let's just have the question.
I just have a-
Go ahead.
Yep, thank you. So, it's my understanding from some of the, some of the staff, that, that they have not notified anybody that was receiving money, except for a very few time-sensitive ones that they had gotten permission to do prior to this meeting, and it's my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, that, that staff are here this evening, because they were prepared to ask, thinking that they would be asked questions on these other various grants. If I'm wrong, like I say, obviously I messed up on the operational budget, because I know I won't do that again, so I, I'm good to support the deferral this evening.
Okay.
Question.
Question's called. All of those in favor of the deferral, please raise your hand. Counsel Duran.
In favor.
All those against? Six, one, for the deferral. Okay.
Your worship, if I may-
Yes, go ahead.
Just for the benefit of members of council, there is an extensive information package on the, on the OneDrive. Our staff went through our grants, complete grants listing, and answered a 11 or 12 question survey on how long the grant has been going on, what the rationale is for it, how it fits into our strategic plan, if they have, if they're of the opinion that it creates value for the city, and so on, so, encourage you to dig into those, and have a look to see, because there has been quite a lot of work done in advance of this meeting, and we look forward to discussing again in more depth. And in the meantime, if you have any questions on any one of those grants or those survey responses, please don't hesitate to reach out to myself, or the department heads who are responsible for those grants.
Okay, let's go to the next resolution, guys. It's, it's, look, we got lots in the agendas, sidewalk-
We should have lots on the agenda, Deputy-
Okay, sidewalk design, do you want to read the resolution?
Finance audit, tendering and administration resolution number two, your worship, moved by Counsel John McLaire, seconded by Deputy Mary Yankoff, be resolved that council approved the Department of Public Works to construct all five awarded sidewalk design sections in the 2025-26 fiscal year, and that council approved budget increase of 1.5 million to the new construction account under sidewalks and multipurpose trails category under the public works fiscal year 2025-2026, capital budget, account number 0114330540255097, and that further council note 3.7 million through the Canada Community Building Fund, CCBF, is available for fiscal year 2025-2026, and is yet to be allocated.
Okay. Counsel Twill.
I, I don't know anything about this resolution, went through Public Works, it must have went through with the previous committee, I don't know, Counsel Matart, you're now appointed to Public Works as well, so, I don't know anything about this, and I don't know why, if the money's in the budget, the resolution is not coming through the Public Works Committee. So, question about the process, but I have a question about, you know, these five particular designs, no further ahead here, I don't even know what the design intersections are, can somebody tell me what they are? Like, what are they? And, you know, we're approving monies, but we don't know what the intersections are.
Director of Community Services, Mr. McKeown.
Albert.
Thank you, your worship, through to Counsel Twill. So, I believe that this was just an increase to just the sidewalk budget for this year, so there is a five-year sidewalk and multi-use pathway master plan. For the 2025 year, there were eight, eight street sidewalk sections that were on that list. Currently, with the reduction in budget originally passed, we cannot do all of those sidewalk sections, so in order to try and construct all of those sidewalks and stay on track with our five-year plan, we would need this increase.
I appreciate that, I appreciate that. I just don't know, like, what, what specifically we're talking about. I understand from a general perspective, you need more money, and, you know, you've reached out to this particular fund to access more money, I understand that, I just don't understand what work is actually being done. And again, you know, from a public works perspective, I don't know, maybe it needs to go back to the Public Works Committee, I have no idea, but I just don't know what, what work we're approving, the funding that we're approving for the specific work, it says here in the resolution, what, five particular designs for intersections? Is that what it said?
Sidewalks.
Okay, was it-
It's right there.
Did it mention the intersections? No?
No, no.
Okay, okay, five sidewalks, and then I also understand that some members of council are not happy with that particular work that's being done, and, and, again, you know, I'm asked to make a decision, I'm put on Public Works, I don't know what the, I don't know what the heck's going on.
Okay, Counsel, Counsel Duran's on the line there.
Thank you, and I can understand your confusion, Counsel Twill, this came before us a couple of weeks ago, and, and I think it was deferred back to look at it again. I was sitting on Public Works at the time, we didn't have enough money to do everything, because we, we had to pay for 1.5 million last year, so that decreased our budget, and we didn't have enough money in the budget. The acting, or the manager at the time, that was before Albert, we all met and we determined what we'd go ahead with, because that's only the money that we had. So, then we come, it goes to finance, it's changed at finance, and it says we can use the government fund there, but we're going to have to realign that funding, because all that has been allotted. So to complete this other, two designs, two streets for this year, we have to increase our capital budget by 1.5 million. You know, we had the vote, council, we didn't feel that passing the budget, you know, two weeks ago, and now we're at a, go back to another meeting, increase it 1.5 million, we didn't think that was prudent, so it went to deferral. So now it's back here again, to see if we can increase our capital budget by 1.5 million. So that's, that's the confusion, that's, I was proud of that. But, like I said, I didn't support increasing the budget by 1.5. Thank you.
I think just to clarify, Counsel Duran, the gas tax money wasn't allotted, it was implemented, or indicated at the time at our last meeting, that that's where we would draw the money from if we had approved that original increase in our sidewalk budget. And at that point, I had asked for a deferral so that we could go back and look at what other things might be priorities for the city around our gas tax, and as you can see in the report, there's quite a list of things that the gas tax would qualify for, everything from highways, bridges, public transit, drinking water systems, blah, blah. The recommendation in this report is none, it's for information only, so I still don't feel that I have a real input from staff to say, is this where we need to draw the 3.6 million dollars with that? I mean, 3.6 sounds like a lot of money, but when we have all of these other things that we could be using that money for, is sidewalks recommended as the priority from our city staff for where we should be drawing this money from at this time, when we were so strapped during our budget time to figure out? Now we're looking at, do we cut city grants, do we, so, is this the priority right now, based on where we are?
Ms. Jenkins?
Thank you, your worship, through to Counsel McCabe, so, if you can think of our gas tax money-
So, if you can think of our gas tax money as like a money card that someone would give you to go to the superstore. And you went and you knew you got a $200 money card, and you're going to buy $500 worth of groceries. You know you're going to take $300 worth of cash and the money card. And what you use that money card for, whether it's bananas or magazines, it really is of no consequence. It's a credit towards the things you're going to buy. During the budget process, the finance manager has factored in the $3.7 million of gas tax funding in terms of the impacts on our operational budget, in terms of how much money we would have to borrow, what the interest cost is associated with that. So, the question really for council is not whether to allocate CCBF to one project or another because we have way more projects than we have CCBF money for that would qualify. So, really, the question is, is council okay with increasing the capital budget to spend another million and a half on sidewalks? Because the sidewalks that were approved last year, they didn't get completed. And it was unfortunate, but I think that just got missed in the capital budget process for this year. From my perspective, I don't have a huge issue with increase in the capital budget because it is core infrastructure. We know that we're going to do those sidewalks, if not this year, probably next year. They've been prioritized. They're a high priority. There are budget implications, but it's not a significant material amount. But I just wanted to clarify that really the CCBF question is a bit of a moot point. It's really just whether council wants to spend another million and a half. We will have to go, whether we allocate the CCBF to this project or a wastewater management project or whatever it is. If council approves this additional expenditure, we'll have to go borrow another million and a half dollars to do that, which is perfectly within our capacity to do so, but just wanted to clarify that.
Second question, Counselor McCabe.
My second question. Thank you. And for clarification, I don't think that it was missed. I think the ask was originally $6 million, and then they had to cut because of the fact that we were so strapped within our budget process. So, again, I think the big thing we have to start looking at as a council is what's our road, what are our priorities? Where's our vision? Where's our roadmap? What are we focusing on? Is it sidewalks? Is it transportation tied to our strategic plan? Whatever. But we're all over the place when it comes to, because we're still very silos-based. Every department, every staff, I get it. Everybody wants something, but what is our vision? Where do we want to go? There is only so much money. Anyway, I think I was still looking for whether or not we felt as a city that this was a priority right now. Is this where we want to be? Are we investing in our sidewalks? Or are we holding on to that money in case something else comes along that's more important?
Okay. Counselor Twill, second time.
Sidewalks, active transportation, all of those, they're very important. Very important piece of infrastructure, and our residents wanted. Just from my perspective, as a new member of the Public Works Committee, I was not involved in those discussions. So, it's hard for me to come out and support, you know, what the previous committee's recommending when I don't know what the game plan is. So, I'm going to request that we have a deferral, send it back to Public Works, so I can become better informed because right now, I'm not informed.
Got it. Second. Deputy?
I can second that.
Yeah, I was going to say I'll second it because it's the Chair of Public Works. It's his department, so I would be respectful of him wanting to...
Deferral's on the table, on the floor.
Question.
Just one sec. He wants to get more information from Public Works and, I think, engineering staff. That's my understanding. Question's been called for the deferral. All those in favor of the deferral? Okay. One, two, three, four. Counselor Dron, yea or nay?
In favor.
Okay. Those against? Okay. Deferral carried. So, it goes back to Public Works. Okay. Next item is, oh, repeal, second reading to repeal this taxi bylaw. Turn mic up there, buddy.
Mic'd up. City of Charlottetown bylaw to repeal certain bylaws, bylaw to repeal the City of Charlottetown taxi bylaw 2021 TXO1. Resolved that the bylaw to repeal the City of Charlottetown taxi bylaw 2021 TXO1 be read a first time, and that was moved by Counselor Julie McCabe and seconded by Counselor Bob Dron. And therefore, be it resolved that the bylaw to repeal the City of Charlottetown taxi bylaw 2021 TXO1 be read a second time, adopted, and that the said bylaw now be repealed. Moved by Counselor Julie McCabe and seconded by Counselor Bob Dron.
Shall it carry? Counselor Dron, yea or nay?
Yea.
Okay, seven zero. Okay, counselors. Back. Who am I missing? Okay. Is that good, Sue? Okay. Time to look at the agenda, and it says move into, motion to move into a closed session.
Resolutions, I don't have any worship.
No. To repeal, that's 4D.
No, just one, just a resolution?
That's after the close. Yep. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Motion to move into a closed session as per the Municipal Government Act of Prince of Bird Island, Sections 119, subsection 1B, E, and F. Before we move into that, I forgot to mention Counselor Bernard did not call in because he's not sick, so he didn't participate in the open meeting nor will he participate in the closed meeting. B, 5B information received in confidence, which if disclosed, would likely be prejudicial to the municipality or parties involved. And it's a proposed land purchase request. E, a matter still under consideration on which the council has not yet publicly announced a decision and about which discussion in public would likely prejudice a municipality's ability to carry out its negotiation. That's event hosting. F, the conduct of existing or anticipated legal proceedings or the review of legal advice, two of them, 15 Park Street and the Queen's Parkade on Queen Street. Moved by Counselor McCabe, seconded by Counselor McKinnon. All those in favor? Counselor Twill, yea? You're not in favor? Okay. Counselor Matar, yea? Okay. Counselor Dron, yea or nay?
Yep. Yea.
Six one. Okay. Okay. Close the doors.
Quick five-minute resumé.
Resolution.
You're ready.
Now hold on, give her time now.
Your worship, resolution coming from economic tourism and cultural development. Moved by Councilor Justin Matar, seconded by Councilor Mitchell Twill. Be it resolved that council enter into a memorandum of understanding with the rights holder of a soon to be announced event and that the mayor and CAO be authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements needed to implement this resolution.
Questions being called by Council McCabe Ward nine. All in favor? Council Duran, yea or nay?
In favor.
Motion to adjourn. Good night.
In favor.